All so much again for being here. I just really appreciate your time and your, your interest. My goals today are one, to answer any questions that you have about the review. And second, to give a really brief overview of what we're calling self-guided review, which is kind of the primary format for you all and others to provide feedback to us on improving these biophysical settings models. So mostly this will be just an interactive session, but I wanted to start with five or 10 minutes of just a little presentation that will give you an overview of what we're talking about when we talk about biophysical settings models and then how, you know, physically you actually go about doing the review. So I'm going to share my screen for just a second and I just have a few quick slides that hopefully will illustrate some of the basic concepts. And again, this is informal. We're a small group. You can just stop me at any time if you have questions. Um, okay. So what I wanted to do first off is distinguish between these three concepts that we call biophysical settings in landfire or BPS for short. So first of all, there's the concept of BPS and then with that concept, we create a map and we create models and descriptions. So our focus here will be on the models and descriptions. But I'll go over the concept and the map, just so you have a little bit of background information. And this is the technical definition of a biophysical setting. And so the idea is that it's a vegetation concept, a potential vegetation concept, and it represents the kind of vegetation that we think was on the landscape prior to Euro-American settlement and it's based on the current environment and an approximation of the historical disturbance regime. So that's the idea or the concept of what a biophysical setting is. And then we take that concept and we map it. And so this is our map for the United States of biophysical settings. So each concept touches down somewhere on the ground. And we associate then each place on the ground and each biophysical setting with this model, the biophysical settings description and model. There's two parts. Sometimes we just refer to it as biophysical settings model together, but the model includes this description as well. So this is one description for a biophysical setting in Alaska. This is a Sitka Spruce Beach Ridge community. And I'm showing just the beginning of the description. A description is usually a three to maybe 10-page Word document that talks about the geographic range, the biophysical site, indicator species, disturbance regimes. So it's a really nice overview of what this biophysical setting represents. And then it's paired with a model. And to begin with, I'm just going to, I'm going to get into the beach ridge biophysical settings model, but I wanted to start with this conceptual model for beach ridge that was created by Michael Shepard and we use this conceptual model to build our landfire biophysical settings model. I apologize for the clarity or the resolution of this image. It was the best thing I could find online. But if you squint, what I'm trying to show here is that this publication by Shepard outlined different successional stages for this beach ridge community where you start with kind of a three different stages of what might be considered kind of an early development community. And then you, you build over time into forest and there's a young forest state as well as middle-aged and old state. And so we use this conceptual model then to create our landfire model. And this is what the landfire model for the beach ridge biophysical setting looks like. So we take the beach ridge concept and we divide that ecosystem into component states. And so using Shepard's conceptual model, we defined what we call in landfire early, and that's kind of his three early ecotone phases that you saw in the previous slide. Then we used Shepard's young class and we call that a mid-development state. And then we grouped what he called middle-aged and old-aged into what landfire calls late one all. So then we assign an age range to each state. And we define the pathways for growth between these states as well as pathways and probabilities associated with disturbance. And we model any disturbance that's important. In this particular model, wind is the dominant disturbance. And so that's what the blue arrows here are representing. So when we talk about a biophysical settings model, this is what we mean. And so in landfire, you know, you can see that the age range associated with each state is quantitative. And there's also a quantitative, you know, a number or probability assigned to each disturbance. So we can simulate these models out over time and we do that for a couple of reasons. One is to estimate the state class amount. So we can quantify how much early would you expect on average over time in this ecosystem versus late versus the mid-state. And as Tina alluded to, that is an important piece of calculating vegetation departure and mapping it, which landfire does. And so that comes directly out of the model, this estimate of state class amount. We also can estimate disturbance frequency over time. And so here I'm showing the amount of wind disturbance happening in this beach ridge community or biophysical settings model throughout the simulation. And we can take these results and calculate a long-term average disturbance frequency. In particular, we do that with fire disturbances because landfire is interested in mapping historical fire regimes, including fire frequency and severity. But you can do it for any disturbance. And so here I'm just showing wind because that's what's important in the beach ridge community. And again, so we tie those estimates of fire frequency and severity to the map of biophysical settings. And that's how we are able to map fire frequency and severity for this state. Um, okay. So that's just a little background on what the model concepts are and how that relates to the map of biophysical settings and the fire regime information. Um, now I think I'm still sharing my screen. I'm gonna I'm gonna get into the next component, which is to do an overview of the self-guided review. Oh wait, hold on a sec. Why don't, why don't we pause for a second and see if there are any questions? And so are there any questions on that first part?
Yeah, Eric here.
Yeah.
Did I interrupt?
You go first, Eric, and then we'll follow up.
Okay, I guess I'm a little unclear on the, the BPS. Is it? I guess I thought it was a state of pre-Euro-American colonization state. But that second slide you showed shows a succession, a succession sequence. So I'm kind of wondering, you know, really is, is, is it a state or more of a, I don't know, ecological pathway?
It's both. And so, um, so a biophysical setting is just that vegetation concept, but then we break it down into its succession dynamics in the model. So we have both the rates of growth and the probability of different disturbances. And so like if on a map, we would map this beach ridge, but if you open up the model associated with it and the description, the description provides information about what each of these states represents. And then the model quantifies both the age range and the probability of disturbances. So there's a lot to it. I think it's kind of both, if that makes sense. Is that?
So is it more how the, how the system would operate? I don't know, what, 200 years ago, more than a state, it's how it would operate?
That's the idea that we're modeling sort of prior to modern human interference. What would the dynamics, vegetation dynamics of this ecosystem be? You know, how often was fire occurring when we weren't suppressing it? Or, you know, how often is wind disturbance happening? I don't think we're having a lot of interference necessarily with wind disturbance, but how often are beetle outrates, that kind of thing? And so we're looking at how often these disturbances occur and what impact they have on the different states that are defined for each biophysical setting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Is there another question?
Um, yeah, I had another question, but I guess I'll kind of follow on Eric's the, the topic he was talking about. It seems like when I think about a biophysical setting, one of the examples that comes to mind is like a floodplain. So that's like the location. And, and then all the different serial stages would be like what happens at different at flooding intervals, you know, so you have all that. So that, but to me, that's like one of the easiest ones to wrap my head around. But, uh, but yeah, so kind of, kind of both. It's like a physical entity, but with all the different vegetation components and serial stages. But my, my question about the biophysical setting, I'm trying to recall, are there any sidebars on kind of the length of time we're thinking of as far as like, well, I guess I'm thinking of things maybe outside of Southeast Alaska, since we're talking about, you know, tundra and boreal and everything. Like we have like our permafrost systems that have disturbance that might go on, you know, the order of thousands of years perhaps. Are we trying to model those? I know we had a few in the last go around. They were kind of, and it's getting to be more common with permafrost falling. Some of those frequencies might be changing. Yeah. So are we getting into that level of that length of time?
Yeah, that's such a great question, Tina. And it's something that we've really kind of wrestled with in Alaska. So I have a couple of thoughts on that. I think the last go around for some of the more infrequent disturbances over a thousand years or more, we primarily use the description document to describe some of those processes. And then we use the models to describe processes that were happening in, on a time scale of maybe a thousand years or less. That's definitely not a hard and fast rule. However, we are running simulations that represent about a thousand annual time steps or a thousand years. And so it's hard for us to encapsulate disturbances that are much longer than that because the simulation just isn't long enough to sort of average out over time, you know, what that frequency is. And with landfire, we are trying to identify long-term averages rather than like peaks and valleys in variability. So I would, I would say like a general guideline might be trying to capture processes that are happening on the scale of maybe a thousand years or more frequent and leaving less frequent disturbances to the description. And then I would just caveat that by saying, let's talk, maybe when you get to a specific example, we could talk about that and see if we would modify that guidance in any way. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think so. It'd probably help to look at some specific cases to go through those.
Right. Yeah, I would say that, that's been challenging in Alaska as well as primary succession. Because generally in the BPS models, we're looking at secondary succession. And that wasn't really a problem for the most part down here in the lower 48. But there's just more primary succession occurring in Alaska. So there are a couple of, I think, sort of interesting issues that sort of weren't more thought probably and more discussion as we go.
Yeah, definitely the permafrost situation where we have, you lose permafrost in the boreal, you might not get, it might not be a cycle anymore. It might just be like a new state. You know, it's like not really anymore.
And I think the other thing that's really interesting potentially about that and, and possibly documenting it is that I think that would increase the value of these models. Because if you can kind of document what's happening now, it gives you the ability to game out some kind of future scenarios. Like what if we lose permafrost? You know, what's that look like? So it could potentially make the models more useful if maybe some, some more of those long-term dynamics were included. But it makes, it, it can be a little bit difficult to kind of fit it in with the landfire framework. Especially because you don't want to show, like if you, there's potential to sort of maybe not get the departure estimate right. If you're not modeling a good sort of long-term average of the different states, BPS states. Okay. Um, well, great questions, you guys. Thank you. Um, let me share again. I'll just do a screen share if I can. Um, and I want to get into, you know, what does it take to do a review? Why is this difficult? Let me try again. I'll share the website. Something about being in full screen mode is making it difficult for me. Here we go. Okay, this is what I want to share. This is a website. Okay. And if I can, I will put in the chat the link to this. Oh, great. Kelsey, I see you put a note in the chat too. So thank you for that. And I just added the link to our BPS models and descriptions website. Specifically, the Alaska BPS review section. And so what I want to do is just take a couple of minutes to show you, you know, what does it mean to review a biophysical setting? We tried to make this very simple. You can come to this website. There's a little bit of background information at the top. But the primary option for review is this self-guided review. And so if you click on self-guided review, it'll bring you to this page where you get some simple steps for how to do a review. And the first one is to select your biophysical setting of interest from this review spreadsheet. So if you click on this review spreadsheet, it'll open up a spreadsheet that lists all the biophysical settings we have in Alaska. So for fun, we've got 82 systems. So 82 communities that you could review. And I'm going to see if I can find that beach ridge we were just looking at. Sorry, let me get its exact name. I have it here as a backup. It's called Alaska Pacific Sitka Spruce. Okay, Alaska Pacific. Sitka, okay, here it is, beach ridge. So this is the community that I showed in that little PowerPoint. So if you click on this, it opens up the description document for this particular beach ridge biophysical setting. And you can, this is just on a box site. And so you can open it. I suggest opening it in Microsoft Word. I, I don't recommend opening it in Word Online. Because I think that makes it hard to track changes and also other people might want access to it. And so anyway, just open it in Microsoft Word. And once you have it open, you just want to turn on track changes. You can review this one page of guidance we put at the beginning. And then you can start suggesting changes, you know, to this, this document. So you might type in, you know, something about more locations that we miss where this community is located or, you know, maybe we didn't get this species.
Hey Cory.
Yeah.
We're still looking at your web browser.
Oh my goodness, thank you. So this is because it's not tracking my screen. Okay, so I'll track now the document. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, do you, do you now see this beach ridge Word document?
Yes.
Looks great.
So here's the guidance, the one page of guidance. Does everyone see that?
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure I, I shared the right document. Okay. And so I, so I was just saying, you know, you can, you can just type right in here, you know, if you've got additional locations or, you know, you're going to suggest some kind of species change. So hopefully this is fairly straightforward and easy, but anything in this document is fair game. You can comment on the disturbance description. You can comment on the fire frequency. We tried to set this up so that you wouldn't have to actually do any modeling or have any special software. So this section on model parameters shows you all the quantitative information from the state and transition model. Okay, so for example, remember that the beach ridge community, we said, had an early class and a mid-class and a late class. And you can see the age ranges associated with those states. And then down here you can see what are called probabilistic transitions. These are the disturbances. And here you can see the probability associated with wind weather stress. Or in this case, it's really just wind, but our generic name for it is wind weather stress. So you can comment on the model without having any expertise or special software. Also, um, there's a set of mapping rules that go with each state defined in the model. And then a specific description of the each state in the model. So for example, the early class here is defined as an ecotone community between the non-forested beach and the beach ridge. So you can see exactly how each state is defined. Um, while you're in these description documents, in some of them, you will find some highlighted questions in the comments section. And I'm going to zoom in here. And I want to look at this second question. And so I went through all these models because we used a new classification system. Vegetation classification system was revised, so we had to update the models accordingly. So with the help of NatureServe, I've gone through all of these descriptions and models and made some modifications. And I documented questions as I went. So one of the questions I had about this is that Shepard defined both a middle-aged and an old state for this biophysical setting. And the, we lumped those two together. We, we modeled them as one state in landfire because we didn't think we could distinguish them for mapping. And so the question I have is, we're going to have more detailed height and cover layers now for Alaska, or we already do. So is it possible to distinguish these classes? That is distinguish middle-aged from old age as defined by Shepard? And if so, would that improve the usability of the model? So as you're going through, you know, if you see some of these questions and you can comment on them directly, that would be fantastic. Okay, I will stop sharing now. And that's all I prepared. So the floor is open for discussion or comment or whatever would make this time useful for you.
It would help me to know how much of the new literature, like what, how much to focus on for areas where there's been a lot of new literature, like particularly tundra or boreal. Things that we know more now about fire regimes. Has that new lit kind of been reviewed or compiled or is that all kind of still pending? Is that part of this review?
Yeah, so we did get a lot of comments back from the staff at the Fire Effects Information System with the Forest Service based in Missoula. They did a thorough review of many of the biophysical settings, specifically looking at the literature for the fire regime. And so in some cases, we got really good feedback from FEIS on, on the, the fire literature. Um, but even with that, I do know that there's still some outstanding questions about fire in tundra. And so I have, I think that's the next review meeting that we have planned, sort of on the docket. We could talk about anything, but specifically I wanted to bring in some questions about tundra and the fire frequency for tundra in different parts of the state. And so I, I think that beyond fire, new literature has not been brought in. So if you have information beyond fire, you could certainly use literature review in all the, the systems. And then if you find, you know, anything that's missing, even, even related to fire, you could bring that in as well. But I think the FEIS staff have done a, a very good job of bringing in a lot of literature. I think their search mostly went up through 20, about 2015, looking at the fire literature and how well that was incorporated in the biophysical settings models.
Great. Thanks for that. Yeah, if you could, if we could get some of the, I mean, just find new people working on these things that are in the state that really maybe aren't tuned into landfire that much that we could, um, I don't know, if you do have a list of all the people who are or is this kind of a, is this it so far? Or are there people in Alaska?
So we, we built a list of people that we've done outreach to, and that list is based on who contributed to the first round of biophysical settings models. And then other individuals that we were aware of, that landfire staff are aware of, who have either contributed maybe to the spatial side of landfire mapping or, you know, contacted us regarding Alaska. So, so we do have that list and we've reached out to certain organizations. Like, I'm trying to remember who, the, the fire consortium in Alaska. We've tried to publicize the review through that. I think there's a climate change group that we reached out to, a, a native communities group. So we definitely want to cast a very wide net and would take any suggestions you have for people that we should contact.
Yeah, the other list I was thinking of was the, the group of people that participated in the last NBC workshop. It was a while ago now, but that with Dawn Faber-Lang, they would have access to that. We've had a few meetings since then. Yeah, so we had, we had pretty good participation in that effort. Especially for the boreal and Arctic areas.
Okay, I'll reach out to Dawn for that. That's a great tip. Thank you. Uh, we're definitely open to suggestions. We want to make this both as easy as we can to facilitate, you know, a lot of people participating and providing input. And then we also just really want to cast a wide net to garner as much local expertise as we can. Jim, do you have any thoughts on anything I've missed or that you think might be important to add to the discussion?
No, I think you covered it well, Cory. And, and just to back up what Cory said is, you know, we, anybody has any ideas of people we can reach out to? Uh, or any other ideas on how we can support the review individually or with groups or a webinar or whatever might be helpful. You know, we, we really want to reach out as much as we can. So all suggestions are welcome in terms of getting the word out and supporting this. So the only thing to add to the presentation though, Cory, you did well.
Thank you. I'll add as you go, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. My email is on that website that I showed all over the place. So it should be easy to reach out and I will try to be as responsive as I can to help support the review in any way that I can.
Well, I will add one thing which I neglected to. Just to, Tina, you'll probably be aware of this, but because the classification changed and the original BPS spatial layer was based on the old classification, we're going to have to do some remodeling of the BPS spatial data as well. So any comments on that as well, we've got this in the wrong place or we're missing that, or it's in the wrong region or whatever, that would also be helpful because we are going to have to recreate the BPS spatial data to match the new classification. So that should be included if anybody has any, any ideas on that, we'd certainly welcome those comments as well. We're going to work through NatureServe to try to do that, to try to help us improve and improve and just recreate the BPS spatial data. That's also required for departure. You know, we have to have a matching BPS spatial data for the departure calculation.
Jim, when you say the spatial, are we just talking about the description of the spatial? Or is there an actual, are we also looking at the actual BPS map?
The actual BPS map has to be modified. It won't match the descriptions anymore. Yeah. So they really need to match one to one. You know, that's, that's critical. So yes, the actual map itself has to be recreated.
For our review, are we looking at the old BPS map and saying what needs to change? Are we just making sure the descriptions are?
I would say both, because some BPSs haven't changed their descriptions significantly. So far, you know, you might find some that we haven't changed so far, but the classification didn't change for many of these BPSs. It's the same system as it was originally. So it applies to both the map and the description. Any changes to the description where it's located on the landscape would be very, very useful, but also go into the map itself and say, wow, this is completely in the wrong place, you know? And actually, you know, let us know that as well. So both.
Well, if we don't have any more questions today, I'll just wrap it up. But again, you can reach out at any time. So this doesn't, hopefully this is the beginning of the discussion and not the end. We probably will be posting a recording of kind of the how to section of, of what we've done today. We'll probably post that online so that other people who couldn't make it at this specific time so that they can review the presentation. And hopefully that will help them get their review started. So thanks again for being here. And let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
We have one more, one more question about
Oh, great. Yes.
The map part of it. Is there, uh, how do we do that? I mean, is there like, do you want us to like draw lines on a map? I mean, me, because I'm sort of familiar with it. I know I can find the BPS map and I could probably create some polygons or whatever. But how would you like that spatial feedback?
I mean, that's a really good question, Tina, because we basically kind of done it verbally in the past by working with people like Tom DeMayo or people like that. So it hasn't really been a process. The best thing to do is if to create a map and even just print it out and draw it, you know, send it to me, you know, whatever, to actually be very specific would be useful. But it could also be general in to say, you have this beach ridge in places where there's no beach and there's no ridge. It, it could be as verbal as that, or it could be specific places where you see an issue. You know, we have an upland type in the bottom land, or, you know, we have gone the wrong slope or the wrong aspect or, because it could be either, but certainly all the specificity we can get in any way is what we need. So whatever works for you would work for us in any form.
Okay. Yeah, I think one thing I'd probably look at is just making sure the general concepts like sub-boreals in the right place and the maritime doesn't like swap over into boreal and those sorts of things.
Yeah, we have a new terrain layer that, that I think our original terrain layer was not very good. And it created some mapping issues, you know, for sites. We had things in completely the wrong place because of that. But the new layer is supposed to be a lot better. You know, the, the slope and the aspect and the elevation. So I'm, I'm hoping that just that itself will create some changes that are useful. But what you, what you just mentioned is exactly what we need. You know, you've got sub-boreal in the boreal, you know, make sure that it's not, you know, anything like that would be helpful.
Yeah, that broad regional look is always a really good place to start because that's, you know, sort of landfire sweet spot is, you know, regional and national level data. And then, you know, of course, if you can drill down below that, that's great too. But we have to get those broad scale patterns right first.